...Planning Commission to order. We'll do the roll call.
Planning Commissioner Wesson?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Story?
Here.
And we have two members who are absent, Commissioner Smith and Chair Person Newman. All right, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have an announcement we need to read. This meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications, Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed on the city's website, www.cidiacapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Lynn Dutton, oh, excuse me, it's Scott Gray. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting. Please sign your name on the sheet at the podium for the record. Thank you. And then we'll go to new business. We have some commission appointments that I believe were discussed at the last meeting when I was not here, and since Linda is not here, do we want to continue the Arts and Cultural Commission? Or I believe she offered it to you, Sam? Do you want to?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair, yeah, she offered to me at the meeting, and I was a little surprised by it, wasn't prepared to say yes or no. But since then, I've had a chance to think about it, and I am willing to serve on the Art and Cultural Commission. But I don't want to, if there's other commissioners who are interested, I'm willing to step aside. But, yeah, I'm willing to serve, and I don't know if that is...
Do we need to make a motion?
I would make a motion that Sam appointed to the Art and Cultural Commission.
Second that.
Bring this over here.
And we'll take a vote, all in favor? Aye. Well, it looks like you're going to be on the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Well, thank you very much, and I plan to represent the commissioners in a noble way.
Good, we know that you will.
Thank you.
So we have the Traffic and Parking Commission, and I believe that you were our representative, and you were not here at the last meeting.
And nobody volunteered.
And no one volunteered, because we're all hoping you will volunteer to continue to do it.
Yes, I'll continue to do it.
Okay, well, maybe Sam could make this motion for...
Yeah, I'll move that we appoint TJ as the Commissioner Representative to the Traffic and Parking Commission.
And I'll second that, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we'll move on to oral communications, and this is the time on the agenda for anyone to speak to us about items that are not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone here, you can come to the podium and sign in. Looks like everyone here is to talk about an item that's on the agenda, so we'll move on. Are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, Madam Chair.
Any commission comments?
I do have one from the last Traffic and Parking Commission meeting. We had been working on an employee parking program for the employees in the village through Park Mobile, so it looks like that passed the City Council at their last meeting. So the program will allow up to 200 employees to park in the lower parking lot. They can purchase a monthly parking permit through Park Mobile on the computer, on the website, for $5, $6.50, I think, per month. And so the hope is to alleviate the employees' parking in the village area and in the resident areas around the village, and get them in the parking lot year-round, and so we'll see how it works. We're going to try it for a year and see how that works.
Sounds like a great program. I actually had one. I wonder if our next meeting staff could update us about the property on Bay Avenue next to the freeway. I refer to it as the Grimes Property, which is sort of an old name for it. I noticed that Ideal Home still has their illegal signs up on their building, and I was also wondering how long that property is going to be used for car storage. So if you could just let us know at the next meeting what's going on, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, and if you'd like, we could give you a quick summary today, because it's something we have been working on. Katie, maybe to give you a brief update on what's been going on with that site?
Sure, we, the extension, there was a two-year extension which included the Toyota dealership utilizing the rear portion of the site to store cars. They've come in and asked for another extension, so staff's been working with them. Two years ago, they cleaned up the site, they put new mulch, put some rocks in for the landscape, fixed the fence that was out there. They're going to be doing more prep work, because it doesn't look like it did two years ago when they initially did the work, so they're cleaning it up. But we're hoping to go back to City Council either later this month, or else the beginning of March. So council approved it originally, so for an extension, you've got to go back to the board that originally approved the application.
Right, so that takes care of the car storage and the Ideal Home sign?
So they were, I'll check on the signs and make sure that...
They have a banner up on, you know, their modular home there, excuse me, that I think has been up for several months.
Okay, I'll follow up with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
Okay, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted in one motion unless there is someone in the audience or someone on the commission who would like to pull one of these items for discussion. Looks like we only have one item on there, and that's the application at 1240 Forty-first Avenue. It's a design permit to demolish an existing office building that was damaged by fire and build a new office building on that site. Does anybody want to pull that? Anyone from the audience? Somebody like...
I would make a motion that we move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Now we will move to our public hearings. Public hearings are intended to provide the opportunity for the public to discuss each item listed. The following procedure is what we'll do. We'll have a staff presentation, public discussion, and Planning Commission comments, and then the Planning Commission will take action on that item. And the first one on our agenda is at 115 Saxon Avenue. It's a design permit to remodel an existing non-conforming residence and add 324 square feet, so...
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is an application for 115 Saxon Avenue. As you stated, it's a design permit application for a 324-square-foot addition to the first floor of an existing two-story residence. The property is located within the Depot Hill neighborhood, within the R1 single-family zoning district. This is an overview of the property. The existing home is located on the southern corner of the property, so you can see it's located very close to the property lines, with a large front open space. Here you can see the existing site plan based on a survey. The existing residence contains a 210-square-foot raised deck, a 100-square-foot second-story deck, and a 100-square-foot covered porch below the second-story deck. The applicant is proposing to remove the deck space and convert it to living space. Specifically, the applicant is proposing to construct a 228-square-foot rumpus room attached to the existing first floor. The existing 100-square-foot covered porch would be enclosed to create a new front-entry room, and the deck above would be removed and replaced with a roof. In front of the new entry room, the applicant is proposing a 53-square-foot covered entry Here you can see the proposed elevations. The new rumpus room is shown in blue, and the new entry room is shown in purple. And the front entry is shown in yellow, and there's also a nice architectural feature along the side of the front entry for the front entryway. So the existing residence is non-conforming. Much of the existing home does not meet the side or rear yard setback requirements, as seen in red. The blue dotted line shows the required setback line for the two-story home. The existing home is only set back one foot from the rear property line when 20 feet are required, and only four inches from the south property line when four to six feet are required. All new addition work meets the setback requirements. The code allows a non-conforming structure to be altered if the valuation of the improvement of the work does not exceed 80% of the fair market value of the existing home. The project valuation is under the 80%, so therefore, this is allowed to continue as a non-conforming. In addition, the property does not meet the current parking standards. The existing 2,095-square-foot home is required to have one covered space and two uncovered spaces. The code requires the current parking be brought into compliance when the existing floor area is increased by more than 10%. The existing floor area within this application is only being increased by 3%, so therefore, it is not required to come into compliance with the parking standard. As we mentioned in the staff report, last week, we were, staff received a phone call asking if the property owner plans to correct their unpermitted garage conversion, and this was news to staff. From the exterior of the home, it doesn't appear that there was ever a garage on the So upon a records research, we discovered a design permit from 1985, which was in response to an unpermitted garage conversion, and required the previous owners, or a previous owner, to convert the living space back to a garage. The 1985 plans are shown on the slide, and on the left hand of the slide was the existing conditions in 1985, and then on the right hand was what was approved to correct the issue of the illegal garage conversion. At the city, we don't have any building permits for a record of this conversion ever taking place after the design permit was issued, and from there, there's no additional information that I can share since this permit. So here you can see the existing lower floor plan, and outlined as blue is the area of where the garage used to be. It is possible that the former garage has been utilized as living space by multiple different owners over the past 30 years. However, neither staff nor the applicant have found any evidence demonstrating that the garage was permitted to be converted to living space. Staff considers the living space within the former garage to be in non-conforming condition, which must be converted back to a garage. Another option would be to redesign in the proposed one-covered parking space elsewhere on the site. Accordingly, staff recommends the project be conditioned to convert the living space back to a garage, or to request a continuance to revise the plans. In addition to the condition number four, staff has, we had another neighbor inquire about the proposed percolation pit. In response, staff has included the second condition, that prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit an engineered drainage plan with specification and details for the design, size, and location of the percolation pit, to make sure it complies with all state and local regulations prior to building permits. So that will be looked at by the Public Works Department at the time of building permit. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve Application 16115 based on the findings and the added conditions. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions?
The discussion about having the applicant go back and convert the living area back to a garage, since this isn't over 10% of the living area, on what basis would we require an adjustment to the parking situation?
Because under the current circumstances, we don't have any findings that this was a legal conversion that took place. So when you have a legal non-conforming, we would utilize that 10% rule and allow them, we would not require them to come into compliance with parking. So, for instance, if a home on lawnway was to convert and never had parking, and the addition was less than 10%, it would be no problem. It would fit within that. But because there's evidence that this was illegally converted, at some point, there was a garage, that that's why we're requesting the condition number four, or suggesting the condition number four.
And I assume that implies that our code requires that at the time of getting permits for these kinds of additions, requires all illegal conditions to be brought into compliance?
The code requires all, there's the 80% valuation rule as well, so if the new addition or improvements go beyond 80% of the current value of the home, then you're required to bring the whole building into compliance. But if the new addition does not exceed the 80% valuation, you're not required to bring a building into compliance for the non-conformities.
Since this is not over 80%, then is this at the Planning Commission's discretion as to require that this illegal condition be made legal?
So I think, just kind of to frame it a little bit differently, the code requires that prior to converting a space from a garage to a living space, you get appropriate planning and building permits to do that. The records that we have available show that that never happened. In fact, there was a code enforcement action which was taken, and may or may not have ever been corrected, and it's really unclear. I think the Planning Commission, however, does have the discretion, certainly more than staff, to look at it and say, well, you know, there's no evidence to the contrary, maybe they did permit it, maybe staff some years ago didn't follow up, and we're going to recognize this as a legal non-conforming condition. But as staff, and I don't have that evidence, I feel it exceeds my discretion.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, yeah, that explains it for me now.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak, Joyce?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Derek Van Holstein. I'm the designer and the applicant, and my clients, they are here with me. First of all, I'd like to thank staff. We've been working on this long and hard, and there have been a lot of pieces on this that weren't easy to take care of, so there's been a lot of back and forth, and we've been at it since last March. This parking issue, or the garage issue, actually came up very much at the 11th hour. Nobody was aware of it. When I first came in and got records, they didn't find anything, either on planning or on the building side. So we were quite taken aback that we should have to go back and remedy a 32-year-old problem caused by some previous owner. Nobody was aware of it. So I would, I would like to ask, on my client's behalf, that the condition number four be removed, that the parking is satisfactory the way that it's been. I don't think there's ever been a problem with parking. There's actually lots of parking adjacent to this parcel and on the parcel. I think the problem here is that there wasn't any follow-up by the city. I think the city actually dropped the ball. If there was an enforcement action and nobody followed up on it, that shouldn't, that shouldn't come back on today's owner. Perhaps if the original owner were there, that might be a different story, but they're not. So I would urge you to pass this with, with the removal of condition number four. I think everything else has been fairly well vetted. All the items, other than this, have been gone over ad nauseam. And the other thing that I would ask is that there's, there's a piece in the non-conforming second story that is an odd piece of roof line that we would like to remove and take that floor area ratio and put it into the rumpus room. It removes approximately 75 square feet and adds approximately 60 square feet to the rumpus room within the setback, so it conforms, the square foot we'd like to put there in the rumpus room would conform, and it would make the non-conforming part more conforming than it is now. And we'd like to do that without having to come back to, to the commission.
Okay.
I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
If I may ask a question?
Sure.
The neighbors' concerns about the percolation pit, could you speak to that?
Well, as you may know, the drainage is state mandated now, and it's gotten to be fairly tricky. So that's why we're being asked to provide an engineered drainage plan. The days are long gone when we could do drainage plants on our own. So I think that we won't have any problem satisfying that condition. I think it's up to the civil engineer to figure out a way to make it work. There's plenty of properties, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a real issue. We can move the drainage pit, so it's a simple matter.
Good, good, okay.
So is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak on this application? Okay, seeing there one, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. So TJ, you want to start?
Well, it comes to no surprise, I typically support homeowners in the extent that we can, and I look back at this, and I met with Rich about this, and I guess there's two ways to look at the documentation we have from 1985. When I read it, what I see is that the staff recommendation, and really, the biggest concern it looks like, was returning this to a single-family dwelling and having that put on the deed which was done. So one kitchen was removed, and it was turned into essentially a single-family dwelling from two units above. And while the plans showed that they were going to eliminate the garage, or the living space and the garage return, it's not on the conditions or the staff recommendation, and we have nothing as far as information to show whether they changed their mind, we changed their mind. There's no information to support those findings. So for me, I'm willing to move forward, removing condition number four. As far as the percolation pit permit, I am not a fan of these. Actually, I think that they contribute to the deterioration of the bluff myself. I think that's my own personal, but I have one, and it, you know, it's a requirement. I think there's plenty of room at the property, so as long as they move it to satisfy the neighbors and the city, I don't have an issue with that. In regards to the changing the roof space to add to the rumpus room, I don't know that I really have a clear picture of how that works out. However, if it's going to move, I guess to take away from that area that's in the, was setback area, was that off to the side yard setback, or the rear yard setback? So if it's going to move away from that, and the city's fine with it, I don't really have an issue with that either.
Sam?
Oh, well, thank you. I just, I think I tend to agree with TJ, since this has been, I mean, used as living space for so many years, and predates the current owners. And I imagine, have staff, I mean, have you researched the record? Were there any records recorded that would put the current owners on notice about this situation or condition?
No, I mean, we don't put typically deed restrictions or notices of violation on property, so, you know, in all likelihood, unless their realtor did a lot of research, which I don't think they typically do, I'm sure they were ignorant to the fact that it had that history.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, just since it's been so long, I mean, I think this city may have, you know, lost its rights to now force and bring up this issue at this time. So that's how I feel about that. Concerning the percolation pit, it sounds like there is the ability to move it, and so I think that we could see that that could be done to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors. That will be helpful. And this adjustment to the rumpus room, I don't, I'll have to rely on staff to maybe make that determination. I heard in the presentation that they would make it more conforming by making that adjustment, and if that's the case, yeah, I'm fine with it, so.
Well, I pretty much agree with both of you, and I was actually here in 1985, working for the City of Capitola, and at that point in time...
Is this signature?
No, it's not my signature, but I can tell you who wrote this, because I know the handwriting, and it was Steve Russell, and Daniel Costelec was the building inspector, and they were both exceptional people. And so I strongly have to believe that there was, you know, some arrangement made, because I agree with you, I think the main emphasis was to turn it back into a single-family house. And so, you know, somewhere along the line, something changed, because if this was absolutely supposed to have happened, I have full confidence that they would have done it at that time. And since they didn't do it at that time, and we don't have any evidence to the contrary, I think something that's been there for 32 years is probably fine, and is not causing any major problems for the neighborhood. There seems to be adequate parking around the house. They're going to have two off-site spaces to park on. There's parking in that large easement that the city owns in front of the house, so I don't have any concerns with that. So I would go along with eliminating condition number four. The percolation pond issue seems to have been dealt with, and they can work it out with their neighbors. And as far as the roof is concerned, what I would like to do is say that it needs to get staff approval, and if staff has any concerns about this modification after seeing the plans, then staff can bring it back to the Planning Commission, and we can look at it then. So with those comments, I assume someone would like to make a motion to approve?
Well, I'll also move, as you've outlined, TJ.
Okay.
And I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the application is approved. The next item on our agenda is going to be a discussion on our zoning code update, and we'll have a presentation from our staff regarding that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So as...
So as, I'll start with the zoning code update, and this evening we're going to concentrate on the zoning map. So there is an updated draft code released on January ninth, twenty seventeen. This code is available on our website currently. It's also available at the library and at City Hall. So if the public, any member of the public would like to look at a printed-out version, that is available at the library and City Hall. Along with the updated zoning code, we printed the remaining zoning code issues paper, and this outlines, um, what we're, what we'll be discussing in the upcoming zoning code meetings. This is the guide for the discussions. There are nine discussion topics included in the remaining zoning code issues. And I've listed all the topics on this slide. This evening we're going to concentrate on the zoning map, um, the transient rental boundary, and I also included, um, the other maps that go along with the zoning codes, such as the environmentally sensitive areas and geologic hazard zones, that I've got slides for those as well, that we can discuss any modifications. This is the first time that you'll be reviewing those additional maps. I'm going to give you a brief overview of some of the major changes that took place to our zoning code. So on slide is the new draft zoning map dated January eleventh. There's a printed version that has a later date that each of the planning commissioners have, but it's the same as the small version of the, um, January eleventh document that's available online. One of the major changes is the commercial area north of Capitola Road is now the regional commercial zone. This is in line with the general plan update, and it extends from Auto Plaza Drive down to the mall and on both sides of Forty-first Avenue and Claire's Avenue, Claire's Street. Next, the corner of Thirty-eighth Avenue has converted, this used to be the, um, neighborhood commercial zone, and there was also one property in there that was public facilities that is owned by a private utility company, and this is converted to community commercial. Next are three properties on Bromer Street. This was at the request of the residents living in these properties. It was previously commer-, um, community commercial. Within the community commercial zone, if you have a non-conforming use, you're not allowed to expand at all. So the homeowners came in and asked to be converted. In the area around it, there's, um, multifamily high-density next door, and we thought it would be appropriate, um, to have, to convert this to multifamily medium-density due to the size of the lots that are there. Next is a correction from the time of an annexation. This is for forty-eight-hundred and forty-eight-twenty Opel Cliff. Uh, these are the large condominiums that sit on the cliff, and it was originally zoned single-family. Next is the Riverview of Capitola condominiums on Wharf Road. This, the area behind the condominiums, um, was zoned RMLM with a, um, and this area is open space. The development was brought close to the road and subdivided, and the area behind it is open space. Next is the church on eight-twenty-two Kennedy. When this church came in, they, um, they applied for a conditional use permit, which included housing, so it was kind of a mixed-use product that they created. Previously, the property behind the church was zoned as open space, but there's actually buildings on that open space. So that was brought to us by the church, um, asking us to look into it further. And when I did, there is a conditional use permit tied to that property, and it's still two parcels. Next is, um, four-oh-one, um, let's see, sorry, uh, four-oh-one Monterey. And at four-oh-one Monterey, there is an existing single-family home on the front of, of the property along Monterey Avenue. This lot is currently zoned R, um, multifamily low-density, and the lot is not large enough to have two units on it. So the R-one classification would be correct for this, and it's surrounded by R-one properties. The property behind it is owned by the city and is now zoned POS. I think that was R-one on the map currently, so that's a correction. Next is the Annett Depot Hill. Um, this property was previously zoned visitors-serving. Within the zoning code update, we're making the visitors-serving an overlay. So for now, we've placed R-one as the underlying zoning, uh, consistent with what's, what the other properties in Depot Hill were utilizing for the, um, the base zone. So an R-one with a VS overlay is what we're suggesting for this property. And would you like to discuss that at all while we're here? This is the first time I've brought that change up to the planning commission.
Yeah, I mean, I would just like to make certain that, you know, we're not creating a situation that's going to make it difficult for them to continue to operate their, their business, because I think they do an extremely nice job of it. And I'm assuming by having the visitor-serving overlay on it, that means that it can continue to be a bed and breakfast, and we're not doing anything to make life difficult for them.
That's correct. We, we looked at it, and the visitor-serving overlay gives them the full development rights to continue to maintain, expand, or renovate their existing use. And we looked at the other commercial or mixed-use, uh, base zones. That would give them a lot more development rights there that we thought, you know, it might be pushing a little bit, given that it's really surrounded by residences up there.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll look at the Monarch Cove Inn. The Monarch Cove Inn property and seven-twenty-three El Salto, these were visitors serv-, well, Monarch Cove Inn was visitors-serving, and then, um, the four, seven-twenty-three El Salto, I believe, was, I want to say, an R-one with a, um, VS overlay. So now both properties, as directed by City Council, um, are an R-one with a VS overlay. The properties surrounding it prior had a VS overlay, and these have all been developed as single-family homes. So taking the VS overlay off of it, actually, uh, let me see if, this property here, I did have a homeowner come in and request that it remain visitor-serving overlay, and we can discuss that if you'd like, but that, that was a recent...
That's a vacant lot right now?
I believe, I, I thought there was a single-family home on that lot.
Is, is that, uh, Commissioner Story's residence on that lot?
I believe it's one of the...
It's right next door.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a vacant lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do we want to talk about that with Commissioner Story here, since that would be...
Well, yeah, I don't think I could engage in this, you know, conversation about that particular lot.
I, I encourage them to write a letter to the city or to attend a planning commission meeting, and, um, I'm not seeing them here this evening, so we may expect a letter in the future. But just to bring that to your attention.
So we'll just leave it the way the council did it at this point.
Okay. So that concludes the major changes that occurred. Um, there's quite a few, they're all in that table that I provided, so if there's any, uh, corrections that you'd like to discuss, this would be the appropriate time. And next, we'll, I've got a couple slides on the transient, well, the vacation rental overlay that we'll discuss next.
So anyway, I, I had a couple, but go ahead if you have some, Sam.
I, I just have one question. Thank you, Susan. It's, um, uh, maybe just a little more clarification about the church at Kennedy and Monterey. That, that was a change?
Yeah, so the, there are two parcels. Sorry, I guess I didn't do a zoom-in on that one, but you can see there's, um, there's this parcel here. It's very hard to see. And then the larger parcel that's right on the corner. And they have the multifamily housing behind it that actually goes over that parcel line. Previously, the rear parcel that's closer to Kennedy, um, was zoned open space, but it was part of the development within the conditional use permit. So we've changed that rear parcel to R-one, and then it's all, that, all the development on that parcel is tied to a conditional use permit.
Yeah, we'll just, why R-one if it's a church, if it's community?
I think all the churches in town are. If you look at Joseph's, it's R-one. I think they've all based...
It's only been at the use, right?
Right. And churches are allowed in the R-one zoning district with a...
With a conditional use permit.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I, I have just a couple I wanted to bring up. And I will start at the very end of Capitola Avenue, um, where the sort of, I think we talked about as the Kerry House is located right now. Uh, we have that zoned as commercial, and I believe that that commercial property goes all the way through the back, including both of those lots. So I believe both lots, since they're in commercial use now, should, uh, be zoned with the commercial use. The one thing we don't want to do is have a split zoning on that property, have the back part be one zoning and the front part be another. So I'd like to see that changed. I would like to see the, uh, go to the property where Shadowbrook is located, and they, uh, have designated that as community commercial. And I think it more appropriately should be in the MUN zoning district as well as the property, which is their parking lot, uh, sort of in that triangle there that's colored yellow, should be MUN, so we have some consistency there through the zoning. And I don't think that would have any kind of negative impact at all on, you know, their current operations and what's done. The other two I have, and I would just like staff to do a little research on it, I'm not adamant about it, are, we have two R-one parcels sort of toward the end of Wharf Road that are a bit isolated. And I don't know if it would be more appropriate, particularly for the one closest to the freeway, to actually be zoned RML rather than the R-one. I think we do want to try and eliminate as much sort of spot zoning as we can. And then if you just look at the R-one parcel that's next to the Mobile Home Park there, and, and see what you think about that, I'm not adamant about those. I just think we ought to give them one more look and make certain we're doing the best that we can do. I would also like to ask, I find this map very confusing with all of the overlay districts that we have going on in the village, and we do have the insert that shows them. So perhaps we could eliminate one of the overlays, maybe like the transient occupancy overlay district from the main map and just have it on the, um, inserted map, and clean it up a little bit to get rid of the dots on the beach and, and in the ocean, so it's a little clearer. So those were the only ones I had on the zoning map.
I don't have any issues with those.
So I, I think we're almost completely done with the zoning now.
Thank you, that's very clear.
Need more, Sam?
Um, no, I don't, I don't have any, Susan, thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll go into the vacation rental overlay. Vacation rental overlay is shown, this is the inset on the map in the right-hand corner, and it's with the black dots. One thing I noticed in reviewing this is that the portion of it that's over the lagoon, we'll have the, them remove that from the map. But this is what the planning commission most recently, well, City Council and planning commission-directed staff. So no changes along El Camino Medio, that was looked at pretty closely last year. And the extension along Capitola Avenue was, um, recommended by planning commission, and City Council approved of that change, so it now does, uh, extend to Riverview. We have had, when we were in front of City Council, there were two new requests that came in to be considered, and they asked that we brought, bring these two requests back to the planning commission before they, uh, for a recommendation before they make a decision. Um, the additional properties include extending the, um, vacation rental overlay all the way up Capitola Ave, all the way to Bay Avenue. That was one request. Another was to include five-oh-two Bula on, to the vacation rental overlay. This property is unique, you can see the yellow dot on the map. It sits between City Hall and the parking lots and Bula, so it's the yellow property next door. Um, there is a letter in your packet from the owners of the home, and so those are the two questions I have for you tonight about extensions of the vacation rental.
Well, for me, I, after looking at it, um, fairly close, and, um, the, the five-oh-two Bula, I, I, I don't see an issue with that one myself. It is kind of like an island, I think that would be fine. Along Capitola Ave, I, I have a little bit of heartburn. I know we, we had this discussion, we've had people come here and request that that be changed, but at the same time, we've had a lot of complaints from people who live in those neighborhoods about them being illegally used. So my, my thought would be to include five-oh-two Bula, but not to extend it to Bay. That would be my thoughts.
Sam?
Well, I, I agree with that. Actually, I thought the council had already approved five-oh-two Bula, um, as, you know, vacation rentals, but I think a number of the council members expressed, uh, interest in it, but they didn't take a vote on it, and they wanted to hear from the commission first. Well, I agree with that. I mean, I think that unique location, um, uh, it's suitable, uh, for vacation rental. But I also agree with TJ, uh, I don't support moving it up, further up Bay Avenue from where we currently have it. And, um, can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm a little bit off-topic, but looking at the zoning map, um, if, I was just a little, um, you know, you can't see the creek, or I can't quite tell, uh, but there on Stockton, um, oh, I see, that's listed as open space. But isn't there open space on both sides of the creek?
Well, I think, I think this is... Right, this, this is, this is the Galeno property on, on that side. And, uh, if you're talking about right there at the bridge, um, they show a little bit as being sort of the green open space, which I think is that little sliver that has, used to be a fire pump house station on it. So that's, that, I would read that as being in the green, but...
Well, I, it's, I, it was just kind of hard for me to discern, because, I mean, it has the, I assume, it has the blue, uh, community facility, which I assume is meant to be the creek?
I think that's right. It's an interesting point. I think it's worth us taking a little bit of a closer look, because we do call, um, you know, that, that little area by the bridge where the bench is as a city park in the general plan. So I think it would be appropriate to zone it the same way. I think that's a good catch.
Right, right, okay. I mean, I just, that got me a little confused, and so, um...
And the creek, the color of the creek should probably be the same as the Monterey Bay water, so it doesn't get confused with public facilities.
Right, and going, yeah, I mean, flowing all the way down into the bay, just...
Yeah, and it's a little confusing with this blue sort of connecting with this blue to the creek flow this way or that way. Maybe someone should look at that.
Yeah, one, one of the tricky things there is a lot of the parcels on Riverview extend to the center of the creek.
Right.
You know, so, you know, technically, that property is one zone, but is, it's, you know, kind of a paper thing that's over a creek. We'll think about that as well, though.
Maybe you could show the, the lot lines going into the creek, but showing it as a creek.
Right.
So then you kind of capture both of those situations.
All right, so as far as, uh, in my opinion on the vacation rental, I, I agree with my two colleagues. Uh, I don't have any difficulty with the five-oh-two Bu... I don't have any difficulty with the 502 Bula, it's sort of an isolated little island there and having it as a vacation rental's not going to impact other residential areas. And I'm not in favor of extending it up Capitola Avenue any further than we did when we previously discussed it.
Okay, um, thank you for your comments. Next, I have four additional maps and we can just look at them one at a time. The first is the environmentally sensitive areas map. I'd like to point out on this map, um, there are quite a few areas that are developed, such as the Capitola Village, um, are the parking lot, a good example is the parking lot, um, adjacent to the new parking lot, the Lower Pat Cove parking lot, that, um, there should probably be more, um, this should be better defined as where environmentally sensitive areas are and if so directed, we could look into getting a contract with a biologist to relook at this map and talk about where are those environmentally sensitive areas on the map that should be shown and areas that have been developed and do not have vegetation and are not habitat, then reconsider.
Yeah, I, I would just add, these maps are, are existing maps, they're in the city's certified LCP, that's where this data came from. Uh, but it's clear when we look at it, they're, they're not accurate on the ground conditions. I would strongly suggest we invest some resources to correct these problems so that somebody in the village someday doesn't have to do a biological study, uh, to build an addition.
Yeah, thank you.
I absolutely agree.
I, I had some huge concern in, um, I mean, part of it comes back, I, I can't remember, I think it's called the Petrus building, after the Oakland Hills fire, they, uh, did this hazard assignment to property and I ran into this issue on a piece of property and I'd hate to see anybody in this checkered area get stuck with some environmentally sensitive, um, issue when in fact they're really, uh, there is not. So that would be great to take care of that.
Yeah, I think it would really be nice to have an accurate map that, that someone did. Um, you know, it was a long time ago these maps were put together and I think they were put together pretty casually and in sort of a big hurry just to, um, you know, satisfy some requirements at the time. And it would be nice to see them refined so that we really know, you know, what areas we need to be concerned about and, uh, we can look at those more closely when they come in and not just have a big swath across part of the city.
Okay, thank you. We'll work on that. Um, next is the geologic hazards map and this is referenced within chapter seventeen point six eight for geological hazards. Uh, this outlines areas of geological hazards within Capitola. And this also is taken from our, um, our coastal plan, so.
Right, yeah, go ahead.
I would add on this one that I think this map is probably going to go through, um, some significant revisions once we get into negotiations with Coastal Commission. Um, so my suggestion on this is that we probably delay investing a lot of time and money into the work until we kind of have a meeting of the minds with the Coastal Commission.
Makes sense to me, how does everyone else feel?
I, I agree. I, I hope it doesn't get too out of hand.
Yeah, I mean, I would just like them to be accurate.
Yeah, it seems like maybe some of the flood plain was utilized in this, there's, there's some discrepancies of, up by Bay Avenue and such, so. Next is the coastal map, so the coastal map is, um...
Can I, before we, yeah?
Oh, go ahead.
On the geological hazard, um, and, and I, I can't quite tell, but is it, is the, um, the lower parking lot, is that included or not included in, within the geological hazard zone?
I believe it's not included.
It's not included.
It's not?
No.
I mean, is it meant, is this meant to show, um, the tidal zone or?
That, that's a good question and that's one of the things that immediately jumped to my mind when we reviewed these and Katie mentioned Bay Avenue, I wondered, well, what's the geologic hazard up there? I, I don't understand. So I think we do need to scrub these and then set the criteria of what the geologic hazards are that we're mapping.
Okay, good, 'cause, and, but, 'cause I recall seeing, um, not to bring my history here, but, um, I carry it with me, but I recall seeing, uh, the tidal surge zones and that it included, uh, the lower parking lot here. And so maybe we should consider that if that is what's, is meant by the definition of geological hazard.
We do have a separate flood map, FEMA adopts map, we're beholden to those, certainly the lower lot is within the flood zone. So that makes me think that the flood zone wasn't a part of this, but then again begs the question, why is Bay Avenue in there, so I...
Right, right.
It's confounding.
Okay, next is the coastal map. This is a map that we produced utilizing our nineteen ninety-one, um, certified map from the Coastal Commission. Um, in working on this map, we took the County of Santa Cruz layer and, um, also utilized our old map to find the exact boundary of the appealable zone, shown in blue. When I was working on this with our, um, the Coastal Commission as well, they wanted us to add a disclaimer. Typically, your coastal map is something that the Coastal Commission, the one that we have currently as our coastal map, it's something that was created by the Coastal Commission and that they adopt. So there was a lot of hesitation in us creating our own coastal map and through, uh, several conversations with them, we got around to, well, I'm sure other jurisdictions have done this and we have a need because the map we have on file is just, it's really hard to read, checking the property boundaries is very difficult and this makes it much easier. So they said, as long as you have a disclaimer on it, you know, we won't acknowledge that, we'll, we'll always look to our map, but you can have one, you know. So we, this is what we've produced and it's very clear on there with our large disclaimer that they have not adopted this map, but it is based on the nineteen ninety-one map.
It's hard for them to overreach anymore than they already have on this map, so I guess they might as well put the disclaimer on there. It's my non-politically correct view.
So make our jobs a lot easier. Any questions on this map?
Nope, not from me.
So in the end, we will have, after we negotiate with the Coastal Commission, again, another final map that actually...
That they've produced.
That they have produced. And, uh, the one thing I would like to see is, you know, us come up with a map that, if it can, tries to follow some property lines. You know, it's hard when somebody has one little, you know, five-foot corner of their property that's in this appeal zone, but the rest of the property's not. It seems like for everyone's sake, we could come up with a map that it has a little bit of logic to it without, you know, denying people their right to appeal ones that should be appealable.
And next is our archaeological sensitive areas map. Again, this is a, um, just recreating a very old map. That was a Mylar that was put into GIS. I think this was actually in our, well, I, I think it was referenced in our general plan update possibly, but now it's digitized and...
I thought this was supposed to be a secret map.
Oh.
No, you, you can show the areas that have sensitivity. You can't show identified sites, however.
May I ask, what, what is the definition of archaeological sensitive area?
You know, typically, it's an area where there's, uh, records or past discoveries of archaeological resources, which would lead a person to believe that it's got a high potential to yield additional resources. For paleontology, you know, it's fossil kind of, um, material, sandstone and those types of things.
So there's history of, of resources being found in these particular areas?
You know, I don't, I don't know the specific sites. I know a couple of, uh, sites where there's been discoveries in town. I would venture to guess that most coastal California is archaeologically sensitive and that's where peoples lived and, uh, so generally, anywhere you go on the coast, if you start excavating the native soils, there's always a potential you're going to encounter archaeological resources.
And what, what are the consequences of having this designation?
You know, ordinarily, if, uh, if a, if a project came in and they wanted to do extensive grading into native soils and there was a resource potential, we'd require that, um, we do a study to determine, is there, you know, in fact, a high potential to encounter resources? And if so, typically, the standard is that you'd have an archaeological monitor, watch the grading, um, and if you find any resources, then there's real specific mitigation measures that you need to follow.
It's referenced in, uh, chapter seventeen point five six of the zoning code under the archaeological and paleontological resources.
But if you're outside of this zone and that same situation occurs, uh, do we not assert the same authority or protections over the resources?
You know, I think we, we'd look at it on a case-by-case basis. Um, you know, most of the projects that we've seen, they have very minor grading. We don't see a lot of basements or, uh, projects that require a ton of excavation, but if we did see that, I think out of caution, we'd often want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to have any significant environmental effects.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I do think, I mean, I'm not being, try, I think there was sort of a secret map that actually did show sites that I believe that you have on file to, um, it was, it was known sites that were around town that had archaeological findings on them, that you can use to compare with this map.
So that concludes the maps this evening and I, um, I didn't prepare any more discussion on the zoning code. We are planning, um, our next meeting. It seems that all the planning commissioners can attend the February sixteenth special meeting, so the other dates, um, did not look like they would work, so we'll try to get as much done as we can on that evening and see how far we get before planning the next meeting, special meeting. So we can continue this item to the February sixteenth special meeting.
Make a motion?
I move to continue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, I guess we get to adjourn our meeting unless, I think there's something else, not being too prepared to do this tonight. Uh, directors' report?
Uh, just very briefly, at last week's City Council meeting, they did pass the first reading of the updated wireless ordinance. It'll be on next week's council agenda for final adoption and then we'll need to send that to Coastal Commission for certification. Also, I, I think I may have notified some or all of you that the appeal for 105 Sacramento, that application was withdrawn, the applicant is going to redesign that project, so you'll be seeing that again sometime and hopefully in the not-so-distant future. And that's all I have tonight.
Uh, any other commission comments? Okay, we will adjourn our meeting until our next meeting on February sixteenth.